Is there time to each group, anybody that wants their recap?
Yeah. The ordinance we rarely have to use offers the proponents of five minutes at the end.
Okay. Mr. Cre, would you like to?
Well, I just wanted to thank all those persons who've given us some ideas.
Can you come up to the mic? Come on, I'm sorry.
We've tried to spend a lot of time thinking about this and thinking through the issues. And one of the ones that young lady mentioned about the track meet, of course, that is a big time for us and we were planning on keeping those gates open during that particular time. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Mr. Cre, can you, got a couple of questions. Councilwoman Carroll.
Thank you. Has the university considered the option of leaving that street open on the weekends? Is that something you've talked about? And if so, what were the, what was the outcome?
Well, we had talked about, you know, intermittent kind of managing that street. One of the things that we were concerned was that if you get people to, students used to cars not coming down that street, would you be more endangering those students because they would not be expecting cars to be coming even on the weekends? So that was our concern when we looked at it from that perspective.
Okay. Councilman Henry, did you have a question?
Well, it was just kind of similar along the same lines as Councilwoman Carroll. Have you guys considered even like during the day, peak hours for, the peak hours for the students as far as closing that off and having the gates closed certain hours? Or is that just something that you guys don't want to, didn't want to do?
Well, I think that the preferred way would be to keep it closed until we get everybody used to the idea that this is closed. And again, our concern is for the safety that once you've gotten people really used to this being closed, we see now people walk across the street and you see a number of times where people will jump back because they weren't paying attention. So how much more will that risk be if you close that street and people are really get used to just moving across campus as if it's a seamless piece of our campus? Especially once we heartscape that too in future years, what that danger would be.
I have a question. Would you say that, I know you don't stand there and watch, but a lot of the traffic on Chestnut there by your campus would be student, probably students?
Sure.
Cutting through.
Good evening. My name is Bill Nelson. I'm chief police at Lincoln University. There's a mixture. We get a lot of commuter traffic through there during the mornings. My office is on South Chestnut, down closer to Leslie. So we see the cars that come up from that direction. And we get quite a bit of traffic through there that's city traffic. Yeah, the student traffic does pick up as the day progresses. Most of our traffic early in the day, very early in the day, are students on foot. The campus, Chestnut Street kind of divides the campus really almost in half. And part of our residence halls are on one side and most of our academic halls are on one side. And then the other residence halls are on the other. So we get that mix of crossing early in the morning. Most students going to the student center to eat. So the commuter traffic in the morning and evenings is pretty heavy and it's mostly city traffic.
Any other questions? Councilman Pope?
Thank you for this effort that you all are making to try to make this a more pedestrian-friendly campus. My questions are possibly directed toward Roger, but let me ask you first, Mr. Cre. Has, first of all, for a background, is all of this portion of Chestnut currently marked no parking? It's all well-marked, no parking?
It's, most of it is yellow curb, yes.
And is it, it's clearly marked that there should be no parking from the beginning to the end of this area?
Right.
Yet you have problems with parkers?
Well, yes, we have problems with parking, but because it's not in our jurisdiction, we don't write tickets or anything to that area.
I see. Okay. So any violations have to be, your department would then have to call our police chief, our police department, and they would have to come out? The second question is, do we have any crosswalk lights on any of those curb cuts there? Do we have any, any method of slowing traffic currently? And has that been considered prior to, you know, in other words, going from clear shot all the way down to vacating this? Have we considered several, two or three lights, pedestrian lights, that would slow traffic and allow people to cross?
Well, we haven't, we haven't considered lights there. We have talked about putting up some, what do you call those things? Speed bumps. But we are concerned about in the wintertime, the difficulty in being able to keep that snow removed. And it's, it would just rip through some of the shovels and what have you.
Sure.
So that's, that's a concern.
Roger, about the lights?
Yes. At this point, there are no lights there today. I don't know that it's been considered in the past. But as far as the parking, our parking attendants do go over there. I talked to them. They said, yeah, they're over there about three times a day. And on average, they're writing about 10 tickets every day. But as Drew indicated, we're just not very successful at collecting on those tickets.
Right. Okay. The next question I have, is this supported with any traffic study count? Or do we know if we close, when we would close Chestnut? How much traffic would then be moved over to Lafayette? We just heard that, the mention of the divide, how much is student and how much is non-student? How much traffic would then move over to Lafayette, which would have to go through the high school traffic? Or how much would move over to, do we have any idea of the traffic counts actually by the scientific measurements down Chestnut?
If I could make a point of order, maybe if you want to close the public hearing, if you're all done with the speakers, then we can just move into staff and answer those questions.
Is there any questions of any of the proponents of speakers? Councilman Scrivener, and then we'll come back to you.
There were two or three speakers that indicated that the crosswalk or the overpass was not being utilized. And I guess I would wonder, especially perhaps a blind student that would be concerned about not being able to hear traffic or have you, do you have any idea why they don't use that? Is it not convenient to use? Is it, is it not handicap accessible?
Mr. Cre, or Shealy, can you want to answer that?
Well, one of the things is that we would have to spend a lot more money to put that overpass in better, better shape than it is. And then secondly, it doesn't, still doesn't cure all of the issues for persons that need to cross the street. And it actually doesn't go anywhere but just over to the other side, doesn't go into the building or anything like that. And we don't feel that it really does very much for our campus, as one of the persons said as well. And so it would be our intention to remove that, that bridge.
Okay.
And also because of the height of that bridge, it does lend itself to some of the trucks that need to come down there for delivery. They find it too, too low.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to close the, I'm sorry. Councilman Mahalovich, do you have a question?
Yeah, there's two related questions. One is, in your long-term facilities master plan, does it, does it have other impacts on traffic flow at this point? And do you have any comments relative to the testimony given on Locust?
Well, in our, in our master plan, as we close that street, of course, is that the, we would, we would see that coming by, the BNS is the street that's right to the north side of our student union. And so that loop that comes out of there and then comes on to Chestnut and goes to Dunkland would stay open and they could make their way that way. But right in front of the Chestnut Street, I mean, right in front of Scruggs, that piece is essentially the crucial piece that we're talking about. And so that we would take care of that. And then the second part of your question was?
Locust.
Locust? I, I think that the city and the partnership that we had to widen that was a great investment. I would hope that as we go along that we could do something to Locust because I think that it would just be a good investment for the city if we could widen Locust just for itself. Even if we weren't doing anything to Chestnut, I think it would be a good investment for it to widen Locust all the way down.
We don't have any traffic count information regarding Locust. I will say that two of the last three, excuse me, DWI arrests that my department made, two were on Chestnut, people going the wrong way coming off Dunkland, and one was on Locust.
Okay. All right, we'll close the hearing and open it up now for council discussion and council questions of city staff. Any additional questions or discussion? Councilman Scrivener?
I don't know if we want to discuss this first, but I, there've been a number of questions raised. In fact, some before the meeting and some obviously during the hearing. And I, as sponsor of the bill, I'd like to put it on the informal calendar.
It's a pleasure of the sponsor to put it on the informal calendar. So we'll, but we need to go ahead and have first reading on it, I think. I don't think we have read it. Then we can put it on informal.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a street right-of-way on Chestnut Street between East Acheson and East Dunkland Street.
Okay. Now, now I would request it to be put on the informal calendar.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, the next item is minutes and reports received. Should have been sent to you.
Mr. Protem. So when it's placed on the informal and we have everybody here from the hearing, we as a council don't get to make any comments when it's placed on the informal? Do we have a chance to comment? Any council discussion? It makes sense while we have the pros and cons in the audience.
No, once it goes on informal, it's essentially been tabled until the next time. You'd have an opportunity when it comes off the informal calendar to have comments and discussion.
Remind me again, is it if two councilmen object that it doesn't go off the informal? Is that correct?
No. Any councilman has the right to put it on the formal calendar. It would take six to take it off.
And I do respect the sponsor's wishes. I just feel, I had some comments that I wanted to say while we had everybody in attendance. Thank you.
Councilman Scrivener?
I have absolutely no objection to the comments being made. I guess, I mean, now that I've put it on there, it wouldn't be appropriate to take it off and put it back, I suppose. So I will leave it there and I would say that the comments could be made, there's a time at the end of the meeting, I guess, where comments can be made. Is that not the truth or the case?
You could, but if you want to do it now, you have, you can bring it back off. We'll have comments and put it back on if that's, if that's what we'd like to do.
That's fine with me because I, you know, I certainly, it wasn't my intent to stifle debate. It was just a question of I thought that was the appropriate time to do it.
Well, I had asked for discussion and kind of, there was a pause there and you jumped in. So I'm sorry, Councilman Carroll, if I missed you. So.
Councilman Carroll, go ahead.
Thank you. And I do respect your wishes to put it on the informal. And I understand with the, there's a few different options that may still need to be explored. But while we had everybody here who made their comments tonight, I wanted to express my support going into it. I was supportive, but I was also concerned after receiving the letter that I know we all were emailed and a couple residents that were concerned about the traffic. And also, I received a call from a constituent in my ward that I highly respect and listened to her opinion and agree that it is a concern with the traffic. But after hearing the pros and cons, I, I would like to see, as this goes on the informal, that perhaps both sides can come to a, some sort of a way to make this happen and to transfer this to Lincoln University. I feel like why wouldn't we be supportive as a city to support Lincoln in their efforts after hearing the reasons? I can't imagine having these students come to this podium or listening to the letter and, and hearing the issues that the students have. And they can't be calling the police department every time. In fact, even if they do call the police department, we're having trouble enforcing those tickets. They're students, like Drew mentioned. While if Lincoln was issuing those tickets, they would have more recourse. And if those students aren't going to get their grades, I bet they will pay their ticket. And it's probably not worth the effort of our parking enforcement that's going there so frequently, three times a day, however many times Roger stated, and not getting the results. There are probably better ways we can use our parking enforcement and our police department and leave this to the experts who are right there at Lincoln University who actually can enforce it. So that's a benefit. I feel like the benefits truly do outweigh any inconvenience. The main inconvenience being the residents in that area not being able to take that road. But I would just ask that Roger Schwartz and the other city staff perhaps take this to traffic and transportation, work with the police department, and look at other access roads. I know Fairmont and Dawson were mentioned, making Dawson two-way was brought up as an option. I do think this would be worth closing this. And if it really became a problem on those other areas, then it could be reopened. But it does seem to me that it makes the most sense from a safety standpoint, from a student standpoint, from being supportive of Lincoln University standpoint. And initially, I kind of liked the idea of leaving it open on weekends and evenings, but then I do see the concern of safety of people getting used to it being open. And more than that, Mr. Crea mentioned making it more of a pedestrian plaza and making it, paving it a certain way or making it look a certain way. And I'd really encourage Lincoln to do that. I think it could be a huge asset right in that area, the heart of the campus, to really make it a pedestrian-friendly area. So for those reasons, my concern still is the rerouting traffic and making sure that that's watched very closely and monitored so that if changes need to be made, that they can. And even other areas, other streets that the city may need to partner with Lincoln to make improvements, whether it's sidewalks, streetlights, whatever it may be. But this particular street, after hearing all the debate, I feel strongly that it is the best choice for the city. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, Councilman Pope? And then I'll come back to Bob.
I would just like to restate that I would hope when we visit this again, when we bring it off the informal calendar, that we'll have more data, that the council that doesn't sit on public works will have more data to be able to make a good decision. I would like to see a map of the complete Lincoln campus, which streets are private, which streets are public, the jurisdiction that each of the policing agencies have, and how we can cooperate to make this more, a safer place for pedestrians without a big interruption in the way traffic moves around in that area. And some estimation, either by counts or by your scientific methods, that you would be able to assist Lincoln in, in the role that, the expertise that you have from years of experience, to be able to make sure that these streets are assets for both the city and Lincoln University. And so basically, I need more information, what other options might be, trial periods, closing this street, closing that street, trying to decide where the traffic's going to go because we can make all sorts of presumptions. It's going to go to Lafayette or it's going to go to down Fairmont. Where will the traffic go when we cut it off? And I do think though, when it gets down to it, from what I understand, this is a safety issue that we need to address. And it's disturbing to me that we seem to have a poor, a poor success rate in enforcing or in somehow taking care of these traffic tickets. I graduated from the University of Missouri-Kansas City in 1970 and again in 1974. And the May of that, end of April, 1st of May of both of those years, '70 and '74, my undergraduate and graduate degree, I had to pay a visit to the parking office and to the bursar's office in order to be able to get my diploma. And it was all over tickets. So we do have methods of taking care of student tickets. Anyway, we did back 30, 40 years ago. We had plenty of methods and it was, we'll withhold your degree. That didn't make me a serious lawbreaker. I paid my fine and that was the end of it. But to vacate a street because of problems of enforcement, that doesn't, that doesn't seem quite right. Safety, that's another issue. And if they're speeding and you aren't able to enforce the speed limit, if, if we have problems with disabled students and people are speeding, closing the street is, you know, people need to obey the law. And so I hope we'd have some more information so we can make a good decision.
Councilman Scrivener?
I, I appreciate the concerns of safety and I, and I too have concerns as well. I, I do think that, and my reason for wanting to put this on the informal calendar is that there are questions about traffic shifting that I think are very, very real issues. If you look at a map, there's fairly limited method of just a few streets for people that live over in that block of, of, of community, if you will, that sits behind Lincoln. I mean, you, most traffic is ultimately going to end up on Clark Avenue, it would, it would seem. And what's that going to do to the junction of Dunkland and Clark in the morning? What's that going to do to the on and off ramps at 50? What's that going to do for traffic coming off of Bald Hill Road? We've already had testimony about moving through Fairmont, traffic on Locust. I think those questions have to be answered before you vacate the street, not after you vacate the street. Because Councilwoman Carroll suggested it could be reopened. Well, once we vacate it, it can't be reopened because we no longer have it. It now is Lincoln's. And so I think it would be bordering on irresponsible of us to proceed tonight and not with all these questions hanging over our head. And I agree with Councilman Pope that it doesn't seem to me like a very, a lack of ability to enforce, doesn't seem like a very good reason for vacating a street. This is the first time that I've asked this question and I probably should ask it in another forum, but isn't it within our purview to write an ordinance that would enable Lincoln University to enforce parking along that street? And perhaps even enforce speed along that street? Or is that something that is only within the purview of our police department?
Drew?
Well, it's a good question. They are a deputized police department, as I understand, through the county. So they can write county offenses. The question is, can they write city tickets? I guess there probably, there probably is a process by which they would gain our police power. I don't know what that is, but it must happen because I know University of Missouri sends some tickets through Columbia's municipal court. So there must be a process. I don't know it as I sit here today. They're not currently able to do it because they can write state tickets, but they wouldn't have, you can't send our parking tickets to county court.
Well, I noticed the city administrator taking notes as, as Councilman Pope was saying some of the things he would like to see. One of the things I would hope he would add to his note would be what we might be able to do as a council to enable Lincoln University to enforce the parking along that street as well as speed.
Councilwoman Carroll?
Thank you. From what I heard too though, I think a bigger part of just simply that parking and tickets and fines is wanting to make it pedestrian-friendly. And it's right in the heart of the campus and thankfully, nobody's been hurt. I mean, the parking and the fines are not going to address a student crossing the street and the traffic coming back and forth right in the heart of the campus. So I still go back to, I don't want to get hung up on the ticket aspect of it because this is a lot bigger than that, from what I understand.
If everyone's had an opportunity to state their piece, then I'm going to again ask to put this on the informal calendar.
Okay. So done. We want item seven, minutes or reports received. Items A through G are on file at City Hall for review and all of you should have in your packet those minutes. Council committee reports, administration committee, Councilwoman Carroll.
Thank you. Administration committee met October 24th. We discussed the date of the March primary. The state bill changed recently and said that if it wasn't in our charter, we were not allowed to continue having a February primary. So our only choice really at this time was to set it for March of this year. We're going to see how that goes. There are some issues with the March primary as far as the dates of printing the ballots, but the city's going to speak with the county on those issues and we will see how this primary goes. And if any changes need to be made for the next one, we will revisit this issue. We discussed the CVB contract and Shelley from the CVB is in attendance this evening. She came to the meeting as well. We added some reporting tools that Councilman Mahalovich had requested. So should make it easier for the CVB to report some of their successes to the council. We also discussed changing the title and classification, downgrading the position of planning and protective services, and also discussed appointments to boards and commissions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Finance committee, Councilman Shorty.
Thank you. The next finance committee meeting is Tuesday, November 27th, 7:30 a.m. across the hall. Thank you.
Very good. Public safety committee, Councilman Pope chairs the committee, but Councilman Loubert conducted the last meeting, so Councilman Loubert.
Okay. The public safety committee met on Thursday, November 1st. Items that we discussed, updated the fire department equipment purchases. Chief Rennick was there and he brought us up to date on that. We discussed the revised noise ordinance that we'll talk about more this evening. We had a discussion with Gilbert Cole, who is the manager of American Water Company here in Jefferson City. We discussed the outage that they had a week or so ago. Chief Rennick brought up the fact that the open burning season is about to come about, begins November 15. Chief Schrader reported that there's a grant that the city will receive and they share with the county in a very small amount of money, relatively $11,000. He discussed the lease agreement with Ozark Harley-Davidson for motorcycles that the city rents or leases from this company. that the city rents or leases from this company. We talked about some difficulties and some additions that need to be made to the new animal shelter, and so there'll be a supplemental appropriation coming forward on that. We also discussed the Chestnut Street vacation agreement with Lincoln University, and of course, we've discussed that significantly already, so I won't say anymore about that.
Okay, thank you. Public Works and Planning, Councilman Scrivver.
Yes, sir. Due to the Thanksgiving holiday, our next Public Works and Planning meeting is going, has been rescheduled to November 29th at 7:30 a.m. across the hall.
Okay, thank you. Other committee reports, JCTV, Councilman Hendrick.
Our last meeting was October 25th, last Thursday. Points of discussion were the fundraising planned, fundraising plan that, for JCTV, also some marketing. There was also some reports of some sponsorships, sponsorships that JCTV has recently gotten. Not major dollars, but it's an effort to say none, to nonetheless, and our next meeting will be November 29th at 2:00, 2:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee or liaison reports? Okay, we'll move to appointments by the mayor. We have several tonight. For the Electrical Board, we have James Gooch, Richard Green, Sam Thomas. To the Cultural Arts Commission, Stephanie Anger. Environmental Quality Commission, Joseph Winkelman, Gary Wheeler. Housing Authority Board, Larry Vincent. Historic Preservation, Matt Alsager, Bill Case, Ed Myers, and Jane Moore. Would there be a motion to approve all of those appointments?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Presentation of staff consultants, we have Chief Rennick, actually Jason Turner, will talk about open burning.
Yes, and the council, or city administrator also wanted me to brief you on the three firefighters that have been deployed out to the East Coast. Just got word prior to the meeting that they'll be returning home tomorrow. They spent the, the last week in New York State, assisting with the humanitarian efforts there in New York. Specifically, they've been going door to door, doing search vacant, vacant buildings, providing medical assistance to those in need, and a lot of mapping. I sent you some data earlier today, hoping that you could look at that, and be glad to answer any questions later about that, if you have any. The other thing that's on the calendar is November 15th is open burning. It goes through March 15th. You're allowed to burn during the daylight hours only, on your property, not on the street sidewalks or storm drains. You're allowed to burn yard waste only, leaves, grass clipping, and sticks. And fires must be attended at all times, and they must be extinguished before night.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Next, we have Roger Schwartz, State Revolving Fund Loan.
Thank you, sir. We're honored to have with us this evening Jack Dillingham from Piper Jaffray Companies to report to us on our success with obtaining money for our sewer program.
Welcome, Jack.
I'm Jack Dillingham with Piper Jaffray Investment Firm in the Kansas City office, and we're serving as financial advisor to the city. And with respect to the ordinance that's on the, on the agenda tonight for consideration for the final reading, the idea of me being president with you tonight at this point in the meeting was to kind of give you a summary of the, the bond issue and the financing plan, and answer any questions, obviously, related to the loan. This $15 million that the, the city is taking action on at this time will be the first series of bonds issued out of the $35 million of sewer revenue bonds that the voters approved, basically, two years ago at the November 2010 election. The, the program or process for this financing is a little bit different than what the city has done in the past. The low-interest loan program that is available for the city, and what you've been approved for, is actually a direct loan from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. So while we take bond authority that the voters approved with respect to the bond election, there is not actually a third-party conventional bond offering to investors. This is actually a loan, and the security for the loan is, of course, the pledge that the city has for the loan repayment as a result of the bond election referendum. The $15 million direct loan from Department of Natural Resources is a subsidized interest loan that provides for, in essence, the ability to finance, in this case, the anticipated final interest rate is about 2.3%. This 2.3% is based on the formula that is, takes our major index for the municipal bonds, for revenue bonds, for long-term revenue bonds, and the Bond Buyer, which is the trade, major trade journal of the municipal bond business, is 30% of the index, which today's 4.29%, times 30%, plus then a 1% administration fee annually from Missouri Department of Natural Resources. So 30% of the, the index plus 1% gets us to 2.3%. This is pretty much right on top of what was anticipated. DNR has provided to us an amortization schedule. The average annual payment, the annual payment is approximately $975,000 a year. The, the final payoff or payment date is July 1, 2033. And to provide a little bit of context for the effective, and the, the good news related to this direct loan is, is that the total interest cost over this period of about 20 and a half years is about $2.3 million for the $15 million that we're financing. Conventional interest rates, instead of 2.3%, today it would be effectively about 3.6%. So this savings of approximately 1.3% in interest costs versus doing a conventional bond offering will ultimately save the city about $2.3 million in debt repayment. And obviously, if you divide that by 20 years, you can very quickly see that it's a little over $100,000 a year annually with respect to savings in terms of sewer budget annually. The anticipated closing or funding of this loan is late next week, November 14th, 15th, and the final interest calculation will be made based on the index coming out at the end of this week, and we do not anticipate it moving much, of course, from where it is today. I would like to publicly thank Eric Seaman, and, and certainly Drew and Nathan, and your chief accountant Sheila Perry for their assistance on the process. It's, it's been a pleasure to work with them, and I'm sure as Roger would agree, it's, hopefully, we're almost to the finish line.
Okay, any questions of Jack? Good job. Thank you.
Jack, if you don't mind, this is a question that came up in our Finance Committee meeting, and if you could just touch on it briefly. Assuming the worst, that we weren't able to pay these bonds, what would the consequences be?
Well, the, the city, by the voter authorization, is, is authorized and compelled, and in essence, the voters have indicated through the revenue bond proposition that the city council is, is required to fix and maintain rates sufficient to repay the, the bonds, and has the authority by council to raise rates as sufficient to make the payment. Is, is that your question, or is it a worse scenario that you're saying that they choose not to pay?
I saw you kind of suck in your breath there, and I said it the first place. It's what finance guys don't want to hear. But, no, I, I guess the question is, is like, in a conventional revenue bond, the, the bondholders would be limited to the assets of the revenue, the revenue stream.
Yeah, this is a pledge of revenues. There's not a pledge of assets, or a mortgage, or any type of a security interest, but it is a pledge of the revenues of the system, and it's a senior pledge, or equal pledge, to all other bonds. So there, this does not come second, if you will, to any other debt. It is equal and lean, and, and in the same standing as your previously issued bonds.
So in the nightmare scenario, then, the bondholders would take over the system and raise the rates enough to pay?
Well, the, the bonds, if they were, if they were in, in default, and you did not make the payment, then, then yes, the, the idea would be that you would, they, these bondholders, in this case, Missouri Department of Natural Resources, as the, the bank, if you will, for this financing, their claim against revenues is equal to the other bonds, and so you really don't have the ability from a, a, a payment status in terms of who gets paid first, or who doesn't get paid. This, these loans are all equal with respect to a pledge or a repayment from the revenues of the system. So it's pretty difficult, Nathan, for us to foresee how, in a meltdown situation, that you would be in a position to single out one loan, or one revenue bond being paid and another one not.
Well, I think that the question was more of, and I guess I see your point about there's multiple bonds out there. Assuming that all of them were in default, I guess, then. The question is, is what assets of the city would creditors be able to reach, and would they be able to raise taxes?
Well, once again, the, the pledge, or the security for these bonds, is the revenues of the system. And so, it's the user fee, the monthly fees, and the, the waterfall with respect to what gets paid first, is the gross monthly revenues that come in from paying your sewer bills. First goes to pay operation and maintenance, and then secondly, it goes directly to repayment of bond debt. So we're pretty far up the food chain in terms of what gets paid first. Clearly, it's a net pledge after operating expenses, but it's, unless the city was, for some reason, in a catastrophe example, where earthquake or something, where there's an interruption in service, a tornado, and there were not revenues from this sewer system being able to collect it, because there weren't the customers to collect the sewer revenue from, then in, in that kind of a scenario, yes, the investors would just have to wait, and it would be a workout situation to, to them ultimately being paid down the road.
Thanks.
Councilman Pope.
Does DNR, its money comes from a state general obligation bond, that, that they...
No, this program, the, the, these come from federal and state appropriations, plus the repayment of other loans similar to this, other direct loans that are in the repayment mode, just as yours are. And so, that's the, why there's still some context to this loan program, referring to a state revolving fund, from a standpoint of the interest earned on those bonds and the release of principal and reserve funds that have been secured for other loans.
I understand.
Yes.
Councilman Lubert.
After the doom and gloom that Nathan seemed to brought up, I'd like to have your commentary on, and maybe I'll put words in your mouth, that the way we are collecting revenue now in our sewer system, that what we have and what we anticipate with rate increases and whatever, that, that we're on the path to handling this obligation very nicely.
Absolutely. We, we certainly are. The, the ability to meet the parity test, for these bonds to be equal and lean, when you have other bonds and bondholders that are already in position and bought bonds based on the revenues and operating expenses, the budgets, and the debt service coverage on the existing debt, to go lay another $15 million on top of that, and still be able to provide that you're able to cover all of your principal and interest requirements on those loans, plus these loans, by a factor of well over 1.2x, is, is the case. And certainly, we went through that process. That's why I wanted to comment and commend that Sheila, your chief accountant, worked with us on this. And so, there was certainly a lot of scrutiny with respect to the last few years in terms of revenues versus expenses being sufficient, not only to show good coverage on the old debt, but what we're issuing at this time.
Councilman Scrivver.
And ask this, even though I, I think the same question was just asked. I'm gonna ask it, maybe, how, how much cushion do we have? In other words, we, we're, we're not up against, we're not spending every dollar to retire these, these bonds. There is cushion...
Yes, I, I got some numbers here with me.
Okay.
Here we go. We have net revenues available for debt service. You know, as I talked through earlier, you look at gross revenues minus your operating expenses, and so, we were showing for 2011, $9.6 million in round numbers of revenues, almost $10 million in current, current revenues with the last rate increase, and about $4.5 million of operating expenses, leaving behind about $5.2 million available for debt service. And the projected debt service is going to ramp up to its high watermark in 2015, just about $5 million. And right, and the current debt service requirements for 2013 are 4.2 million. So there's a million dollars of net revenues available, over and above what's required for the actual payments.
And as, as we go through this process, some of that debt will be retired?
Yes, and then that's why I was looking for the, kind of the high watermark, because we have a drop-off in 2022, in just a little less than 10 years, to where it drops by about $2 million. That's some of those early issues we did in 2001, that go back to that one, the first series that we did from the old bond election, it was some 52 million, I believe it was, back in 2000, that the first one of those SRF loans would be obviously amortized in '22.
So we're well within our means.
Yeah, I, I think you're doing very well financially. Obviously, there have been some rate increases that you will have, have put into place, and maybe a couple more that are to come online, as I remember it. Certainly, Eric can speak better to all of that than I, but from a perspective of the plan of finance that's in place, as we see it, does not need to be altered.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, thank you, Jack, for all that you do for us. Good job. Okay. Any announcements by any council or staff, any announcements at this point? Councilwoman Carroll.
I wanted to mention earlier in the meeting, when, excuse me, they were talking about, they, they weren't at the mic when they were talking about the trip and overseas, when they had gone on Facebook and they learned about our city, the people over there. And I, I wanted to mention, back then, they weren't at the mic to say it, because I think it's a credit to Michelle, our communications director, who puts a lot of things out there on Facebook, and people in the community may not know that City of Jefferson does have a Facebook page. And it was interesting, earlier in the evening, when they were speaking of how people on the other side of the world were able to learn about Jefferson City by checking out that page. So I think if they don't know about it, definitely check that out. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, I just want, of course, to remind everyone to, to vote tomorrow, but also, if you didn't vote in the last election, the precincts were moved around a little bit. So encourage everybody, make sure you check your voter ID card, that'll tell you where your precinct is, make sure it's the, the same, or that you know where your new precinct is.